This meeting of the Aurora City Council for February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is hereby called to order. The clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver. Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Here.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Is there most improved appointment of sergeant arms for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad, do we have anyone saying the pledge with us this evening and invocation?
I will ask a wonderful ladies from the veteran advisory council to help with the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Patricia DeVore of the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council. Leading the pledge of allegiance with for us, leading the invocation for us tonight, my apologies, is Pastor Dr. Gregory Jones, the senior pastor of Mount Olive Church of God in Christ, and the superintendent of the St. James B. Alfred District in the sixth ecclesiastical jurisdiction of Illinois. He's also a member of the Presidential Prayer Team of the United States of America, the senior pastor of Mount Olive Church of God in Christ.
Gracious heavenly Father Lord, we thank you for this another opportunity to call on your name. And even now, we ask your blessings upon the mayor and all of the council members, Lord, not just their professional lives, but even their personal lives. You know what they stand in need of. You're able to open doors they need you to open. You're able to make ways that they need you to make. You're able to heal relationships that they need you to heal. And God, maybe they have a sick loved one. Let your healing virtue flow. Bless the proceedings of this meeting in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, kind sir. All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda in Mayor's Office Community Affairs Presentation, Mr. Muhammad.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of presentations this evening. Before that, we want to take a look back on, it's been a very busy week here in the city of Aurora, beginning last week, here with our presentation to our young Abigail.
Strength and a smile, and you will absolutely win.
After the break, a very special honor for a young girl in Aurora battling cancer. Fourteen now to making a difference. A special and courageous young lady was honored last night at Aurora City Council meeting. Twelve-year-old Abigail Ayala has spent the last year battling an aggressive form of cancer. She has undergone major surgery and is currently finishing her final round of chemotherapy. Aurora Mayor Richard Irvin presented her with the Mayor's Award of Valor in recognition of World Cancer Day.
I never thought I would be having my child going through that process. But here she is, resilient, a year later, almost done with treatment. And we're just hoping for good news, saying that she's cancer-free.
And we are hoping for good news also. Abigail got flowers and some gifts. Once she completes chemo, she will undergo radiation.
Abigail and her mom Sandra sends their thanks. She's been elated all week. She said when she got home and opened her presents, her mom says she'd start to cry all over again, just so thankful of all the love that was shown to her. She said she really, we really gave her that energy to push forward this next phase of her cancer treatment. And as the mayor said, when she is proclaimed cancer-free, we'll celebrate as an entire community. Last week, we also cut the ribbon at our new nine-one-one center, our renovated, reimagined nine-one-one.
At four thirty, a new nine-one-one center is now open in Aurora. The innovative tool for the city to help keep everyone safe. Aurora Public Safety workers are working out a brand-new nine-one-one call center this morning. Aurora's mayor, police chief, and fire chief held a ribbon cutting for the new state-of-the-art facility yesterday. It now features upgraded computers to provide quicker response times. There's also a video monitoring wall with integrated feeds, cameras, news, an answering dashboard, shot spotter, and training capabilities.
This refresh will allow our people to be more efficient and effective in carrying out their duties.
The project was financed by nearly two-point-three million dollars in federal funding.
Well, thank you to Chief Cross, Chief McCabe, Jackie Hobday, who also sends her thanks to the entire team here for your support of the project and just allowing us to keep moving forward with public safety. And this weekend, you know, we celebrated Lunar New Year. Many of us were there, Pacifica Square, as they kicked off the annual celebration.
Plus, celebrating the Year of the Dragon. How a local community rang in the Lunar New Year over the weekend. When we come back. At five fifty-one now, did you know it's officially the Year of the Dragon? This weekend marks the start of the Lunar New Year.
West suburban Aurora honored the occasion with a special New Year celebration. City officials joined Aurora's Chinese leaders and community members at Pacifica Square, Aurora's Asian-themed shopping mall. Guests retreated to a traditional dragon dance, Chinese performances, and some giveaways. And also.
Our alderwomen having a good time there dancing. So another wonderful cultural celebration here. So busy month ahead, as we have a number of other events that we are open to the community. This Thursday is the fifth anniversary of Henry Pratt. We know all too well what happened on February fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We'll be with the families of all five of these gentlemen who lost their lives five years ago. So that is at six PM on Thursday at Bel Syle, a candlelight vigil. And we will unveil the official memorial bench that will have a permanent residence at the Aurora Police Department after Thursday. So we invite everyone out at six PM on Thursday. And then we're going to close out the month with our faith community, the Aurora Interfaith Alliance. Our quarterly prayer breakfast is on the twenty-ninth at eight-thirty, where we bring in our faith leaders from all of our faiths in Aurora, as we talk about One Aurora, moving forward together, celebrating the, you know, milestones of some of our faith-based institutions, and just really seeing how we can continue to move Aurora forward. February, as we know also, is Black History Month. As we celebrate Black History Month, the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board invites you to the Eighteenth Annual Heritage Dinner, where Sheena Baker, Realtor extraordinaire, who we know all too well here in this community, philanthropist, is our Leader of the Year. This year, the Leader of the Year Award, the eighteenth one, will be renamed in honor of our late Alderwoman Shakita Hart Burns. So it will be the Shakita Hart Burns Leader of the Year Award. And speaking of Burns, we are also honoring two individuals as our, the mayor's lifetime achievement honorees. One is Joy Bowling, longtime educator, civic leader. And the others, and one we know extremely well, Mr. William Burns, for his decades of service here in the community. The alderwoman served those thirty years. He was right there with her twenty-six of those years, attending all the meetings, but just doing his own work in the community as a patent-holding engineer retired. We also honor three community members, Pastor James Berry, you've seen him here doing invocation of Harvest of Faith Church, Dr. Alma Harrell, and her work in the public health sector. And our own City of Aurora Communications and Engagement Coordinator, Nick Thompson, will be honored for his community work. He's on a number of community boards, doing community work as well. And we will honor eight young students, high school students with scholarships, sponsored by Xfinity, Rush Copley, and Bloom Haven. So it's going to be a wonderful night. We invite everyone out Friday, February twenty-third, seven PM at the Matrix Club. And so as we honor Black History Month, we also recognize tonight an amazing individual who leads an amazing faith-based institution, Mount Olive Church of God in Christ. Eighty years old this year, founded by Bishop William Haven Bonner in nineteen forty-four over on Trask and what was Pond Avenue. We've known it as Bonner Street for all of these years. And for seventy-two years, Bishop Bonner led that church until his passing in two thousand and sixteen. And then there have only been two other pastors since then, Elder Augustus Wright from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, and the current pastor, Dr. Gregory Jones. So eighty years as a faith institution in Aurora, we know the work that Bishop Bonner did. Three pastors leading that institution. We invite Mayor Irvin down now to present Dr. Jones with a special award.
It is my honor to give this Mayor's Award of Black Excellence. It's honored and presented to Greater Mount Olive Church of God in Christ for serving the Aurora community for eighty years. You have been a beacon of light and hope for countless parishioners and people in our community and beyond. Congratulations on eighty years of service to the city of Aurora.
Pastor Jones, any words?
I just want to say to Mayor Irvin and to each and every one of you, thank you for, and our own older person, I see him there, Mr. Brandon Tolliver, thank you so much for this award. This will be prominently displayed at our church. And we couldn't have done what we've done without the help of you people. Alderman Mike Seville, thank you. Alderman Lash, where I'm looking. Thank you. For each of you that did anything to help us, we appreciate you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're right there, Alderman Tolliver, second ward, Alderwoman, not a figure.
Again, celebrating eighty years of service to the community, another round of applause. Thank you. And now we have the annual Black History Month proclamation that the mayor will read. Accepting the proclamation will be the four black chiefs of Aurora who serve on the mayor's executive team, Chief Keith Cross. Thank you. Give him a round of applause as he wakes his way down. Chief Human Resources Officer Alicia Lewis. Chief Information Officer Mike Piggies. This is an awkward moment, but Chief Engagement Officer Clayton Muhammad.
Today I read this proclamation for Black History Month, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by black people in our city, throughout the nation and across the globe. And whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson initiated Negro History Week in February nineteen twenty-six, which was expanded to Black History Month fifty years later during the nation's bicentennial in nineteen seventy-six. And whereas the history of Aurora is fortified with the stories of black leaders, black families, black churches, and organizations, helping to shape our community with the Civil War era, from the Civil War era through the Civil Rights Movement and into contemporary times. And whereas Aurora has had such a, such black trailblazers as Marie Wilkinson, the matriarch of Aurora, Donald Patterson, the first black person elected to office in Aurora, serving as county commissioner, Shakita Hart Burns, the first black person elected to the Aurora City Council, Dr. Charles Ponquinette, the first black superintendent of schools, and myself, Richard C. Irvin, the first black person elected as mayor of Aurora, and countless others, thank you. And countless others who have paved and continue to pave the way. And whereas, Black History continues to be made in Aurora by many contemporary leaders, including the leading black executives of Aurora City Hall. The Aurora Police Chief Keith Cross, one more round of applause for Keith Cross. Chief Human Resources Officer Alicia Lewis, another round of applause for Alicia. Chief Information Officer Michael Piggies, one more round of applause for Michael. And Chief Engagement and Equity Officer and Senior Advisor to the mayor, Clayton Muhammad. Let's give a big round of applause for Clayton, making things happen. And to our black members of the Aurora City Council, Ward Seven Alderman, Brandon Tolliver, let's give him a round of applause. And Ward Nine, Ed Bug, let's give him a round of applause. Gentlemen, if both of you would come up and join us so we can take a picture, please, I'd appreciate it as I read the rest of this proclamation. Now thereof, for I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, recognize the contributions made by Aurora's black community in the past, present, and future, and do hereby proclaim February twenty-fourth, February two thousand and twenty-four, as Black History Month in Aurora, and encourage all Aurora residents to support events and initiatives happening this month and throughout the year as we move Aurora forward as One Aurora. Another round of applause for our executives up here in front of the room. Another round of applause for our executives.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one final presentation this evening. On behalf of our JAC program, please welcome the leader of FH Passion, Mr. Leo Wright.
Let's give Leo a round of applause if he approaches.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, council members, guests. My name is Leo Wright. I'm a senior vice president with FH Passion and also a twenty-seven-year resident of Aurora's tenth ward. So in two thousand and twenty, FH Passion was awarded Cooperative Job Order Contracting Program with the city of Aurora, which means, there's cooperative language in there where not only Aurora uses it, but other communities use it. And with this program, the city earns a fee associated with every task order that we do. To date, we've completed over fifteen million dollars in task orders, equating to a hundred and fifteen projects. The largest project being about four-and-a-half million with Downers Grove Park District. You know, the average-sized job being about seventy thousand dollars. So with that being said, the fees that are returned come out to be somewhat of a substantial amount. And with that, I want to present to the city tonight a check showing the total aggregate amount that the city has earned by hosting this contract, which equates to four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
So it sounds like we got more checks to come.
Yes, you do. All right, thank you.
Another round of applause.
Thank you. And that concludes the presentations, Mayor.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, mayoral appointments, a resolution. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayoral appointment?
Twenty-four zero zero two zero, resolution approving the reappointments of Patricia DeVore and Richard Lawrence to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution moved by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith? Are there any questions or discussions on this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver. Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Do we have Patricia DeVore or Richard Lawrence in the room with us today? Let's give them a round of applause, thank you very much for your service. Now, if you folks just wait a minute, when we get to all the mayoral appointments, I'm going to have you come down and take a picture with us up front here at City Council. Thank you again for your service. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty-four zero zero two one, a resolution approving the reappointments of Sandra Harrison, Dr. Todd Layden, Dr. Jennifer Nurell, and Alderman Edward Bug to the Aurora Education Commission.
Samute.
Has been a motion made by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman Lash. Are there any motions, any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? And just for the record, Alderman Bug recused himself as he is one of the subjects that were going to be voted on today. So are there any questions or discussions on this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
No.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. We can have Alderman Bug come back in. Do we have Sandra Harrison, Dr. Todd Led, leading, Jennifer Nurell here with us today? We do not, well, let's give them a round of applause for their service to our community. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-four dash zero zero two five, a resolution approving the reappointment of Sandra Harrison to the city's advisory commission for disabilities.
Second.
Been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. I don't believe Ms. Harrison's here, but let's give her a round of applause for her service to the community. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-four dash zero zero two seven, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Seth Hoffman, Amber Foster, and Simon Munoz to the Aurora Preservation Commission.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Do we have Seth Hoffman, Amber Foster, or Simon Munoz with us today? Please, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, folks, for your continued service to Aurora. I'll have you come down in just a few minutes and take a picture with us in front of City Council. Madam Clerk, will you read the neck, the last item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty-four zero zero three zero, a resolution approving the reappointment of William Small Jr., Robert Lundquist, and Annette McMahon to the Human Relations Commission.
Samute. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Do we have William Smalls with us here this evening? Robert Lundquist or Annette McMahon? Let's give them a round of applause for their service to the community. Now, if those folks that were just voted on appointments or reappointments, if you meet me down the well, I'd like to take a picture with you if I can. Another round of applause. You know, we're about to get to our regular portion of the meeting. I want to give everybody an opportunity to file out those folks that are here for presentations or here to, appointed or reappointed to a board. All right, looks like those folks that want to leave, left, feel free to stay. You can leave if you'd like. Feel free to stay and participate in the rest of the city council meeting with us. We appreciate you being here. Madam Clerk, do we have any, let's go to the next section of the agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Then let's go on to, next, we will hear both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full. With the clerk, now please read both agendas in full.
Twenty-three zero seven two one, an ordinance amending chapter forty-one point five of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to special events. Twenty-three zero nine six two, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to purchase a fire station alerting system with eight years of support services from Purvis Systems Incorporated for one million ninety-four thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighteen cents, plus a three... for RC Wegman Construction Company of Aurora by the amount of $3,617,578 for seven individually bid construction trade packages, as well as seven allowances as part of the Public Works Combined Maintenance Facility project. 24-0034, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase a one-year renewal of a DocuSign Contract Life Cycle Management subscription from Carisoft Technology Corporation of Virginia for an amount not to exceed $119,999.74. 24-0035, a resolution to award a contract to RJN Group in the amount of $288,500 for the 2024 and 2025 overlay manhole inspections located throughout the city of Aurora. 24-0050, a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of reimbursement between Cyrus One and the City of Aurora for the property located west of the Eola Interchange at 2725 Bilter Road in Aurora, for which Cyrus One is the contract buyer. 23-0929, an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area for storm water management purposes to be designated as SSA #218 related to real property commonly known as 1449 Senior Estates at 1449 Jericho Circle, Aurora, and calling for a public hearing thereon for pins parcel A, 1529300010, 152930018, 152930023, 1529401061, and a portion of 1529300022, 1529401059, and 1529401060. Parcel B, a portion of 1529300022, 1529401059, and 1529401060. 24-0054, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for New Warehouse, 2800 Deal Road. 24-0086, a resolution approving reduction number one for Redwood Subdivision, Thimbleberry Boulevard. 24-0088, a resolution accepting the dedication of a city water maintenance minute 1002 West Illinois Avenue. 24-0091, approval of the meeting, the minutes of the Tuesday, January 23, 2024 City Council meeting.
Has there been a motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Smith to accept both the consent agenda and direct council consent agenda before we entertain that motion? And second, are there any questions or motions to remove any items from either direct-to-council consent agenda or the consent agenda? There being none, a motion is seconded on the floor. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and direct-to-council consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under unfinished business?
24-0002, a resolution approving the 2024 Quality of Life Grants in the amount of $1,017,000.
So moved.
Second.
Has there been a motion, second, before we entertain those and continue on with this item, before Alderman Bug and Alderman Warman recuse themselves, is there a presentation on this item? All right, there being no presentation, we'll allow Alderman Bug and Alderman Warman to recuse themselves. And Alderman Garza.
Quality of Life Grants.
All right, the three Aldermen that have conflicts have recused themselves. There's been a motion, and second, on the floor, are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. I don't know if at least two of the Aldermen, Alderman Bug and Alderman Warman, have a conflict with the next one. I know Alderman Garza does. So you can probably have those two come back in or, if you'd like. to the council chambers. Madam Clerk, will you read the item?
24-0003, a resolution authorizing approval of the 2024 Annual Action Plan and Annual Action Plan substantial amendment 2023, number three, funding recommendations.
So moved. Second.
Has there been a motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Smith? Again, let the record reflect that Alderman Garza has recused herself from this particular item. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. We can have Alderman Garza return to council chambers. Madam Clerk, read the last item under unfinished business.
24-0046, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $58 million taxable general obligation bond series 2024 of the City of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Kendall, and Will Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing certain casino redevelopment costs, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds, providing for the pledge of certain incremental property taxes to the payment of said principal and interest, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
So moved.
Has there been a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco? Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Alderman Seville.
Yeah, I have maybe some interest that I think the council will find interesting with regard to what the City Council did back in 1996. What happened at that point is Hollywood Casino actually came before the City Council with a proposal to purchase the Civic Center Authority, to demolish it. The Board of Directors actually took a vote to... ABACA took a vote in favor of that. They also presented a proposal to purchase the Aurora Hotel next door, which the City Council had then owned through a process of condemnation because we were looking into redevelopment, demolish that building as well. They were going to look to expand the Riverwalk in downtown Aurora, and on this site now, this clean site, they were going to build a multi-story hotel with added restaurants and conference space. The first vote that we took was approved by one vote, and two weeks later, through a process of reconsideration, an Alderman changed their mind, and it was actually denied by one vote. So that really kind of set in motion with what has happened the last year and the discussions that the administration and the City Council has had with Hollywood Casino, because at that point in time, we didn't know that they would go beyond the tenant licenses. We didn't know the state would change the law to say it's okay to gamble now on the land, and we didn't know that Chicago was interested because in 1996, Mayor Daley was still calling them putt-putt votes and still laughing derisively at it, and he didn't see the potential of economic development and the revenue that could be garnered by the actual casino. And so that really set in motion the landlocked ability, if you will, of the casino and why we had these discussions the last several years, why we lobbied for the state to change the law so this Hollywood Casino in Aurora could actually compete with the going market at the time and to the benefit of not only their clientele, but the citizens of Aurora with the added revenue that we hope to receive in the future. So with that denial of City Council, it really limited their possibilities at that point in time in downtown Aurora, and I think that's why they were convinced through a series of discussions and looking at their potential with regard to their business, that was important to go to really this economic corridor that's really been unutilized in Aurora, which of course we all know is I-88 in Farnsworth. So I thought I'd give you a little history of what transpired before. I thought you might find it of interest.
Just to be clear, in 1996, there was an opportunity to expand and even add a hotel. The City Council voted against it at that time?
Yeah, well, like I said, they voted against it, but they voted in favor of it. The first vote, two weeks later, they voted against it by one vote, so...
Alderman Franco.
How did you vote? (laughing). Well, so, although I can't remember.
You remember everything else. Any other questions or comments? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries. The item is approved. All right, let's go on to new business. Is there a motion to suspend the rules, consider items under new business? Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of the item under new business?
24-0100, a resolution authorizing the execution of a property purchase and sales contract for 64 East Downer Place, Aurora, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
Has there been a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco? Are there any questions or discussions on this resolution? Alderman Lash.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did read the sort of general rationale as to why we're purchasing this. We want to move some businesses off Broadway into this building to prepare for the Broadway construction project going on there. I'm curious, have we talked to the business owners about the prospective business owners that we intend to move there?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we ever had that discussion, and I think that was a hypothetical discussion about moving someone off of Broadway into this.
It's written in the ordinance. If there's another... We can ask a more broad question. What are we planning?
It was hypothetical when we met. It was hypothetical.
If you have, if you can answer the question.
Good evening. Alex Minella, Senior Planner, Mayor's Office of Economic Development. I see there's a question on the table. I'm so sorry. You may... May I ask you?
The question was that there's a possibility that some of the businesses on Broadway may be relocated to the properties we're purchasing on Downer with the expansion and improvement of Broadway in the period of time it's going to take to improve it. Has anyone spoken to the businesses as of yet that could be affected?
Not as of yet. As of right now, we are just moving forward with the strategic acquisition of those two properties before you tonight.
Has anybody in the legal department spoken with anyone?
That was a hypothetical conversation.
It was an hypothetical conversation, correct.
Go ahead.
That is accurate. There was a hypothetical conversation had with some of these tenants.
Is there any other use that we have planned for this outside of hypothetically moving some of the Broadway businesses?
With... Moving forward with the acquisition of these properties puts us in control of deciding what uses and what user can go in those properties.
But we also take it off the property tax rolls, which means that all of the taxing bodies don't get taxes off that once...
As of right now, one of the properties, 61 and 65 East Downer Place, being still on the tax roll, is registered as vacant, is now producing income for more than, I would say, about 10 years now, and it needs... It's in disrepair and needs significant improvements. With us in control, we can select the proper user able and capable of carrying the cost to redevelop that property. On the other hand, the other property is currently underutilized as an office with a rental apartment on the second floor, and being us in control of the destiny of that property, we can attract some other user and other uses income-producing.